Do you have any issue on this?
Let's do this.
Okay, let's go!
I need to be in like 30 quick minutes.
This is, this could be a short time.
Call meeting to order.
I will speak fast.
All right. December 16th, 2019, GBOS regular meeting. The good board of supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. I am Mike Eddington, co-chair and land use supervisor. On my left...
Jerry Fox, co-chair and public safety supervisor.
Good evening, everyone. Christina Hendrickson, Parks and Recreation.
Erin Boone, Fire Supervisor.
And one missing...
James.
James, who maybe here later. Disclosures, any disclosures for anything on the agenda tonight?
Not for me.
Are we voting on anything related to the Fire Department tonight?
You are.
Yes.
Okay, and I would like to disclose, although I don't think it merits anything, my husband is a volunteer firefighter at the Girdwood Volunteer Fire Department.
Item 9, would that perhaps be... Is that in Echo Ridge?
Because I live on Echo Ridge?
Yeah.
Could be, yeah. I wasn't here for that first discussion, so I'm not totally up on what's going on with that, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I live on Echo Ridge.
I see it no different than my parking spot on High Tower when we did the reconfiguration at the corner.
Let's take the first one. As far as the Fire Department is concerned, I do not see a conflict of interest, a substantial conflict of interest, between Christina and item 10, unless anyone disagrees?
No disagreement.
Okay. On item 9, I would say there is a, there is a private interest, but I would not say it relates, it raises to a substantial private interest.
I concur.
Any disagreement with that?
No disagreement.
Okay.
I have one other thing too.
Sure.
My boyfriend is, his business is building a bar for Girdwood Brewing, so it's unrelated to the food concessions, but I just wanted to throw that out there because we might be doing a resolution as support.
Okay, I think if it's unrelated to this item, it would be considered not to...
I agree.
Yeah.
Today's agenda, concurrents, do we approve today's agenda?
I move to approve today's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? November 18th, 2019, GBOS regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the November 18th minutes.
All second.
I'm just gonna glance through very briefly. Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
I was on here.
Okay, 3-0. December 14th, GBOS Fire Rescue Special Meeting regarding GFR 2019 Operating Budget Shortfall, approval of both minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from December 14th.
Is that the 14th or the 12th?
It says the 12th on here, but it was the 12th.
It is the 12th.
Oh, yeah.
I rescind my motion and I amend it to move to approve the minutes from December the 12th.
Second.
All those in favor? 4-0. Announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please take side conversations into the foyer. There's an election for GBOS seats D and E on the ballot in April. Clark's Office has updated their website with filing information. I believe filing starts on January 17th and goes through to January 31st, but details are on the Municipal Clark's Office website. MIA GBOS Quarterly Meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 27th at 4:00 PM in Anchorage City Hall in the 8th floor conference room. Introductions, presentations and reports, we start with subcommittees and trails.
Hello, everyone. I'm Carolyn Grudy, Chair of Trails Committee. We had our regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, December 3rd. Most of the things we talked about are actually going to be talked about tonight for the rundown agenda, so I'll just be brief. We started talking about the Girdwood Trails Plan we are working on. We were discussing hiring Huddle as the AK, as our contractor. And as soon as we get our contractor on board, we'll start moving forward with setting up a subcommittee for the Trails Plan. Because we're gonna be, we are gonna be working closely with Imagine Girdwood, the Girdwood Area Plan, for the areas of, the Trails part of Recreation, so we're gonna come up with a good plan for easy information sharing and prevent a lot of overlapping aspects to the two plans. We also had a detailed discussion again about the hand tram. If everybody is interested, that wants to look, in the packet for the last two months is all the details of the proposed improvements to the plan with railings and gates and side rails such. We did decide that at the next Trails Committee in our January meeting, we're gonna hold a vote just to ensure approval with the committee to move forward with getting that hand tram reopened. I feel pretty confident that it will be supported. We did a, with that Facebook post and the article in the ADN, it's pretty overwhelming, not 100% support, but pretty overwhelming support of getting the hand tram reopened. We're starting a few talks about a possible future bridge, but that's a long ways down the road, and in the meantime, most people feel it'd be nice to get that hand tram back going. I think we'll be talking about that later. Let's see, we also talked about our two main projects for next summer will be the Iditarod Trail. We put in the grant, the application to work on that, the Lower Iditarod and Virgin Creek Trail. If you're also interested in the things that are being talked about for the Virgin Creek Trail improvements, that's also in the packets for the last two months. We did get the flashing light installed this week at the crosswalk, that was very exciting. It was fun to see the kids all come up and learn how to run that. In our January meeting, we're gonna be holding election of officers, so there's definitely an open spot for treasurer, as well as for nominations always welcome for chair or the two co-chairs. Yeah, I think that's all, because everything else is gonna be talked about later. Thank you.
Any questions in the vote?
Nope.
Questions from the public? Okay, Brian, land use.
Good evening, everybody. So we had our regularly scheduled December land use committee meeting last Monday evening. We heard from the committees that we'll be hearing from tonight. We had three old business agenda items that received action from the Girdwood Land Use Committee. We approved revised LUC operating principles, the revisions and edits defined residency in the Girdwood Valley and defined the Girdwood service area. The motion carried at the land use, 14 in favor and no opposed. We had a second presentation by the Girdwood Brewing Company, and we'll be hearing from them again tonight. And at our meeting, the Girdwood Land Use Committee moved to recommend a GBOS Resolution of Support for a Code Change to Allow Food Concessions in Area Zone GC10, adding a P to the GC10 table. The motion passed 15 in favor and no opposed. And then we also had a review of the parking restrictions under consideration for Echo Ridge and Garmisch. And the Girdwood Land Use Committee moved to recommend a GBOS Resolution of Support for No Parking Signs to be placed on one side of Echo Ridge and Garmisch Road. That motion also was 15 in favor with no opposed. Just like the Trails Committee, the Land Use Committee is going to be having elections at the January 6th meeting for officers. I've been sitting as the chair on the Land Use Committee for probably five or six years now, and I think it's time for some new or some different blood to get in on the, get in on the fun and action of leading one of Girdwood's most exciting committees that there is to lead. I will certainly entertain moving around in there, but I'd like to see a new chairman for Land Use Committee take over. I would urge anyone attending this meeting that it is a great way to spend the second Monday of the month, and it's the place where Girdwood gets to hear all of the business that comes in front of the GBOS. You hear it at Land Use Committee first, it gets discussed, everybody has a vote and everybody has a say on every issue that comes in front of Girdwood at the Land Use Committee, and that's exciting. Any questions?
Anything to report?
No.
From the public?
See you all January 6th.
Okay, legislative report, I see several. Who would like to start? Jennifer, you're standing up. Would you like to start? Jennifer Johnson, our representative.
Sorry, I had, I've been very bad, I haven't...
Would you like to stand behind the mic?
Haven't been down here.
Don't touch the mic. We don't have many rules, but we have some. Sorry.
It has been a while.
Yeah, it has. It used to be I could just stand here and just talk. Anyways, I don't have much to say, I'm just checking in. I would like to say that I was down here for a meeting earlier, and I would like to introduce Robert Urban and Erin Shine. They both work with me, or I work for them. And just, if you don't get me, hold of me, because I seem to be spending more time in Juneau than I've spent anywhere else, they're great people, and they'll answer your questions and actually, I mean, it's, our office is a team, and I have a great team. Other than that, I'll take some questions. If you have any, it's gonna be another interesting year. I'll tell you that as co-chair of finance, the two, the House Finance, Neil Foster is the other co-chair, we're working hard to hit the ground running. What's happened in the past in Juneau, there seems to be a two-week period, you know, they dabble in and no one, I don't know, everybody's getting used to being back and something. We're gonna start the first day off with meetings. We're setting ourselves an ambitious schedule to get the budget off the House floor into the Senate. We'll see how it goes from there, but we're gonna try to get as much done as quickly as possible and see if we can have life. Yeah.
Any possibility of new revenue sources?
Not at this point, no, and I'll tell you why. And it's, I'm not, I'm not against new revenue sources, but I am against new revenue sources to pay a dividend. And that's what would happen. I think we have to discuss what our budget is, what our wants are, and then we can start talking about revenue, because we're gonna have to. Right now, the, this year, the revenues, 60% of the revenues for the state budget will be from our structured draw from the permit fund. And 40% is everything else. So we're gonna have to be looking at something else, but I, I think we need to get our house in order first. And I do feel, I mean, I've, I've been playing with a low and broad sales tax for a long time, but I, I wanna make sure when we do introduce it, it's to make the state work.
Do you have any thoughts about the, I forgot the bill number, to increase gas tax?
I mean, for the, for the, yes, I mean, that's something I think we should be doing. That's a little different, I mean, you can't, that goes to our road service, and, and, yeah. I was bored the last time they came around. I was, I was impressed, my first session in, you know, the first two years, it was in the budget, but we never passed the bill. But they never took it out of the budget, which I thought was passed through. But no, I definitely, we pay the lowest in the country. And I, you know, I don't know if you remember, a number of years ago, when the price of gas went up high, we even bought it more. So it's, it's, I have no problem with that. It's interesting with gas tax and what's happening throughout the country is, gas tax is not bringing in the money that's needed to fix the infrastructure, no matter how much it is. And they're trying to come up with new ways to pay for the roads, because, I mean, we're all riding cars that don't use as much gas as we do. So it's, you know, that's something that will have to dip us down the road, but right now, I guess I have no problem with that.
Any questions from public?
I guess I'll ask one more. So the governor's proposal to give a large permanent fund dividend and drop down on the constitutional budget reserve to practically nothing would leave us, would leave the state with...
Right, nothing.
Nothing for the next year.
Yeah.
And I don't know how that would work for our following year.
I don't either.
So do you have a comment?
It's, it's not getting a very warm reception. At least by me and maybe some of, it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's funny, I mean, not funny, but, we've been kicking this can down the road, or the state has, for a long time. And, you know, I've been here for well over 40 years, and we've had 40 years of entitlement. And so it's, we can't fix this overnight, but the idea of taking the last bit of savings and spending it in, you know, being all things to all people, I can't do it. This year alone, well, do you really wanna hear me talk? I don't know if any of you know how I ended up, where I ended up this session, but my whole thing after I got elected is I wanted, all I cared about was balancing the budget. And I was looking for a caucus that would agree with balancing the budget. And that's the caucus I'm in now, we now, you know, knowing that you, when you deal with the Senate and the governor, eventually you might have to go a little bit into savings, but the budget that came out of the House had to balance. And I couldn't get some of the other folks in my party to agree to that because of the dividend. I still believe we have to balance the budget. That CBR is basically, that's our, that's, that's our cash flow. That's the money when tax money hasn't come in, that we pay bills with, that's our fund balance. And if you, if you deplete that, this year alone with our fires, earthquake, you deplete that, I mean, it just, it makes no sense to me whatsoever. And so it's not gonna get a friendly reception. And another thing that will never get a friendly reception from me, and actually the caucus at this point, is going into the permit fund any more than the structured draw. So we're not gonna, we just, we're not spending savings.
As a constituent, not necessarily sitting here with a GBOS hat on, I would just like to remind you that Girdwood also is home to people who work on the ferry system, is home to fishermen, it is home to educators in the Chugatch Prince William Sound School District, and that as you in your caucus seek to balance the budget, that you take into account those members of our community that are dependent upon seasonal work, no different than those that work at our recreation and outdoor economy and tourism in this community. So please remember them as you think about where we could make more sustainable cuts. And I have heard firsthand from previous elected leaders about the idea of privatizing the ferry system and making it similar to the model that the railroad has. Now, we remind you that the railroad is rich in land and that the marine highway is not. And so I, not to get into a debate here, we can happily, with you, Robert and Erin offline, happily talk about that a little bit more. But as we seek alternative solutions to look for sustainable ways to connect us to outer lying areas that our constituents work within throughout the year as seasonal changes take them to different ports and to different jobs and different revenue sources, please take that into consideration.
No, and I do, I was just, what I was gonna tell you, that actually the ferry system does have some land and some assets.
Some.
It does, I mean, but it's, it also, the reason now that two ferries have taken out of service is they have found some, some pretty major repairs that are needed, that the system has been broken for quite a long time.
Like kicking the can down the road thing?
And I agree, so it's how, you know, how you fix it and how we can, and, you know, I think you're well aware that the Southeast Economic, CEC, anyways, you know what I'm saying, has spent quite a bit of time looking at this and working with this. The only other thing I can say about the ferry system and it's still being broken, and it is, it's the lifeline to a lot of the state, and I have no question with that. But it fascinates me that they had to close bars down because they couldn't make any money on the ferry. And that amazes me, because in Alaska, when you have a captive market and you can't make the money in bar, then there's something wrong with the system. Just saying.
But on that note, it's good to see you. We'd love to see you in your stuff more.
Yeah, and I do apologize, this has been a, this has been a very different year. And I have spent a lot of time in Girdwood, and I didn't get to ski today, because I haven't been able to ski for a long time. Just saying!
Always tomorrow. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Your representative, Johnson.
Good to see you.
John, Simpman Wedleton.
Sorry, have to do it. So, you know, I followed Jennifer onto the assembly and following her here. She made it look easier than it turned out to be, but... And speaking of kicking a can down the road with the ferry system, but we did that with our port. You guys have heard a lot about the port falling down and all kinds of problems, and it's very serious. So we've been trying to deal with that, it's very expensive to fix that. So tomorrow we have on our agenda approving new tariffs. And the tariffs go up substantially for petroleum products and cement, because we're trying to build a new terminal just for them, and it's like a 20 to 28% increase in their rates fairly quickly over the next five to 10 years, and then it drops down a little bit, but kind of trying to do the cost cause or cost pair. And then we raise all cargo a little bit, try to save a little bit of money so we can apply it when we start hitting the rest of the port. So I think, given that we're way behind, because we used to count on the state to fix these things, and they won't anymore, so now we have to do it. But I think it's very difficult for the port users, but it's partly because we didn't save money over the years to do, you know, repair the port. The ultimate cost was calculated, on a gallon of milk, you'll pay about 2 cents more for the cargo. And the fuel is pennies a gallon, but that's quite a bit when you're fueling airplanes, so it gets very competitive, but we'll see how that goes, I expect that to pass. We've gone the other way with our landfill, with Solid Way Services does have a fund for replacing the landfill, you know, when it's full, so we have a big savings account for that, and it's done fairly responsibly. But they're very aggressive, Solid Way Services is trying to protect that landfill and put less and less in it, so even the bag ban, which wasn't a huge amount, that's part of that, and trying to do more recycling, their, their plans, which should be, should be being built in the next couple of years, to do a new central transfer station that will be more efficient, do more composting, and just keep stuff out of that landfill. So that's all good news, and then there's this idea that is moving forward with a second study for a waste to energy. So this is a huge incinerator. And it'll be interesting, because it would make recycling bad, because we'll need lots of fuel. And it doesn't really pencil out with just our trash, but we want all the trash from Matsui and Wasilla and even Kenai to get this thing going to make electricity. So we'll see where it goes, we've got another, it'll be well studied, but it's up to half a billion dollars to pay for this thing, so it's serious money. They expect that if it were to come about, if it extend the life of the landfill from 40 more years to 130, or by another 130 years, so a super long time. There's obviously a downside to everything, and one is, these things, it's difficult to have clean smoke come out, and there can be lots of poisons. And when you get the ash that's left, it can have a lot of high density poison, so they have to get around those. But it's done in other places, so they've been studying that quite a bit. So it's interesting, and I think it's, this is looking ahead and not kicking a can down the road, it's trying to fix things as we go along. So I, really, it's fun to be part of that kind of thing. We've talked before about the secondary access roads, and we did put that into code, it was very simple, it just said that emergency access is now part of the task of city government. So we can do a bond, citywide bond, to pay for emergency access roads. And I think we talked quite a bit about that before, and it can apply to Girdwood. Our initial thinking was really just to do bonds that would get the match for AMATS money, federal funds, for the hillside, Chugatch, Bertrand River. Girdwood's not in, the Ternigan Armor not in the AMATS area, so that won't apply here. But we decided we should make it for Girdwood as well, just in case. So we did do one little aspect of that, people were worried that it would be used to build collector roads for more development, hillsideers weren't happy about that. So we defined it as being used just for roads that we built to emergency vehicle access standards. And so it wanted to be full municipal, you know, curb and gutter and so on if we do these things. The trick will be, when it goes on a bond, it's getting it passed, because if it's only for, you know, some roads on the hillside, the people in the rest of town will go, why are we paying for something that doesn't affect me? And that's sort of unfortunate, because this stuff would be, if there's a wildfire, you know, these are ultimately our friends and neighbors, and getting emergency vehicles out there and getting people to be able to evacuate. So there should be something on the bond this year that'll be fairly small, we're talking about, you know, a million, million and a half dollar bonds to do a variety of connections. So we'll see where that goes. And Girdwood is on that, potentially, I mean, is in that regime. So potentially, if we thought someday we could bond for a huge amount of money to do, I think the bridge here is one thing, you know, shore that if we had to, or, you know, that very controversial second road in and out of the valley, you know, potentially. But it opens up a very slight crack in the door where these things could happen. We passed a budget? I haven't been here for a while, so I'm not sure we talked about. And the thrill of passing a half a billion dollar budget faded after the first time, but it's, you know, the operating budget would be different for Girdwood, but overall for the city, went up, so it increased the average home about $20 a year. So I think down here it'd probably be, you know, $40 or so, I mean, your budget's a little bit different. So not a huge amount. We did a couple of things, we still, a small increase in the police again, and we've had a huge problem with Fire Department and overtime, which has always been a problem, really big this year. So we funded a full academy and some other features, you know, some more money for overtime and other parts. So the Fire Department has a lot more money coming in for next year, so hopefully we won't run into the same problem there. We had, to deal with their $4 million overtime budget, we had rolling closures of equipment in Anchorage, but you didn't, so you should be happy about that. You guys ran a different ship here. So those are some highlights. Any questions?
I have one. Stormwater utility or Stormwater Commission, whatever happened with that? Does that ever pass? Is it still, are you still looking at it? Is Girdwood part of it?
The Stormwater Utility did pass. Girdwood is not part of it, we defined it as just, initially at least, the bowl, and it would be quite a leap to bring the rest of the city in. We put it in the code like we did the secondary access, we said stormwater maintenance is a citywide function, and then we authorized them to borrow $1.5 million, which was initially to be for a study, to really get into the nitty gritty of what we would do and how we would charge people and so on. And then another million dollars, or 1.0 million, to hire staff for the couple of years where it would be set up before there was any income coming in, and then some... years where it would be set up before there was any income coming in, and then some several hundred thousand dollars to deal with lawsuits that are inevitable with these things. So when they came back and we set it up, and they said we're going to do a study, they said in that study it would be a million and a half dollars. So make of that what you will. It's a very huge, in-depth study, may or may not be coming. But that's where we are now. We're waiting for that contract for that study report. And I think we do need a stormwater. We have to maintain the stuff we have. We heard about this, you know, problem at Northern Lights where half of it was closed over the weekend because of a culvert collapse. But that's the kind of thing we're dealing with all across town, all the time, as things are collapsing. We need to get ahead of it. We kicked the can down the road, and we can't do that anymore. The question is, how is this set up? How's this stormwater utility set up? And I'm a little nervous right now when I see the way it's going, but in some way, we need to do something like this. At least in the bowl, and maybe here too. I think we'll show how it'll work, and then if Girdwood says, yeah, we've run in on that, you could be part of it or maybe set up your own, but that's five to 10 years down the road.
Right now, I don't think we'd want to.
No.
Just so you know, we don't want to.
Yeah, and so you're clear, you know?
We have more recent infrastructure in some cases, in most cases.
In some cases. For the landfill study that's looking at the incinerator, when is that to be published? And is that available for any public comment? After it's published, obviously.
Incinerator is out of vogue. Waste to energy is very hip. So it's a waste to energy.
Waste to energy, okay.
There was a study done-
Thank you for making me more woke. I never thought that would happen, but okay.
I think if you go to the Solid Waste Services website, you'll get a link to a very initial study that describes it.
I've seen that one.
Okay, the next one is just started.
Okay.
So it'll be, they said 90 days, you know?
Really?
So I think, you know, March, April, we could have something out there. And it's not, this next one is basically, if we do this, here's each step of what we need to do.
Okay.
And then I think at each step, it'll be evaluated. But there are issues. I've read a lot about it, and you know, the landfill lasts forever, but if we put a lot of poison in the air, that's a problem.
Thank you.
We'll cover that later.
In the year?
I don't know.
I'll hang on.
So I noticed one of the things that's on the agenda tomorrow is the legislative priorities from the assembly, what you're going to ask the state. Could you just give us a very quick summary of?
You know, last year was easy to give a summary because we just said Port of Alaska.
Right.
This year, we have a whole bunch of stuff. And a lot of it is, help us with basically broadly homeless, you know, some mental health, et cetera, and so on. There's a few, so I can't say I've read it, but I don't really, a lot of it came from the mayor, a few points from us. There are some legal changes we are looking for, just changes in the law. But it's much more extensive than last year. But it's not really asking for a huge amount of money. I mean, if you look at the amount we're asking for the port, which, you know, the initial thing was, oh, it could be up to $2 billion, but we really are talking, you know, $1.25 to $2 billion to do the port ultimately over many years. And I think we're asking the state for 30 or 40 billion, you know? So it's not like we're saying, state, do it. You know, we're saying, all right, we're going to do all we can on our own, even though it is a statewide asset.
I did notice there was one thing that might be relevant here. It was a request to change the way that there's a search urge for providing wildlife in secure garbage cans.
Right, you know, the issue, so you've made Girdwood a secure trash zone, so you've, everybody's supposed to have bear cards. And it was relatively small change because everybody, but about 12 people already have them. But as we roll it out into somewhere, the place we really need it is Northeast Anchorage. We'll do an area, you have a lot more people, you have people of lower income, and sometimes those dollars make a very big deal to the family. So if they pay the full cost of using a bear card, it could be a challenge for them, but it's a citywide benefit. You know, it's like if we're not attracting them into that Northeast Anchorage, maybe they won't go into heading towards West Anchorage. So the idea is if we could change the law so that we could have a citywide, everybody who gets trash, you know, has a trash can, pays, you know, 50 cents more, it would cover that increased cost for everybody who's in those secure trash regulations zones. So that's the thinking behind it. I, I don't know if I support it or not, haven't thought that much about it. I mean, I think it's, it would be nice to have the option to do it.
That would be a change in state law.
We have to, state law has to change to let that happen.
Any other questions from the public?
I have one other.
Oh, sorry.
I saw an article in the paper about after, post earthquake, and Eagle River having a lot of issues, that someone might be looking at whether the codes should be changed so that places like Eagle River have to have like building inspections and make sure their quality code, is that being talked about? In the legislature?
It is, yeah, less now.
Okay.
It was an issue, you know, we looked at, clearly there were more problems in Eagle River, saying, is that because their homes weren't inspected by city inspectors? And it's possible, because when they did look at a lot of those homes that have pumps, they weren't built to the seismic standards that they should have been, because the city rules are the city rules everywhere, but city inspectors don't inspect everywhere. But there were other reasons, like ground failure, which is not so much the way it was built, could have been an issue. It's a tricky one. It's not 100% sure on that. You know, I would not, we could do it and expand it at the assembly level, but it's sort of like expanding the service area. And I would, I would support putting it to a vote and let the people in Eagle River decide. I don't know how they would do it, and not just Eagle River, upper reaches of the hillside are also, some sections are outside of the building service area. And Girdwood, are you in?
We're outside.
Your house would be similar here. So, you know, I don't, I would not oppose putting it to a vote. Another thing that Fred Dyson is looking at is, you know, you do disclosure forms when you sell your house, is adding a line to inspect it, so you go in eyes wide open, presumably, if people do it, heck of a man, so. So that's the extent we've talked about. I think the mayor was gunnered to do it, but was not getting a whole lot of assignment from the assembly, let it slide. Any questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate it. You're always fun to follow, Jennifer.
George, do you have anything? Suzanne LaFrance?
Hi, everybody. My name is Joshua Springer. I'm the Assembly aide for Suzanne LaFrance. I'll keep it really short tonight. I'm sorry, my allergies are killing me, so I'll try to get off the stage here pretty quick. As I rolled into the parking lot, I got one request to talk a little bit about a town hall coming up. I think I heard it announced earlier, but I saw that I was asked to talk about it, so I'll say it one more time. On the 9th of January, from about 6 o'clock to 9:30 PM, Assemblyman Felix Rivera will be hosting a town hall here to discuss new revenue for the city. This is a meeting that's open to the public. I can only tell you what I've just seen as I was rolling into the parking lot, but from what I see, it looks like a pretty good opportunity for Girdwood creativity to shine. I know that new sources of revenue for the city and on a state level are something that gets brought up here at least, I think, once at every meeting I'm at. So if you have any opinions to throw into the bowl, this would probably be an excellent time to do so. I think that's all I've got to say for today. Is there any kind of question or thing that I could try to field?
What's that?
I'm sorry, what?
The date?
Oh, sorry. The date for this event will be, sorry, I got this. It will be January 9th here at 6 o'clock PM.
Is your meeting commencing anymore?
Yes, looks like they've sent me a permit, Girdwood Parks and Rec, request for facility rental, Girdwood Community Room. Sorry, I, I'm kind of, I hate reading off of emails directly to you guys. It's all a little new information to me, but that sounds like a great meeting to have. I've known Felix for a long time. I've known him to be a very open-minded man. So if you've got ideas, I'm sure he'd love to hear them. I'd love to hear them too. I'll try to make some time to be there. Is there anything else?
Actually, on that topic, I'll mention, I noticed there's a, something on the agenda for tomorrow's assembly meeting, talking about sales tax, a 3% sales tax. What do you think, is that likely to make any progress in the next couple of months?
Ooh, man, I don't know. That's a good question. Is John still here? Hi, John. Do you have any opinions on the matter?
Of the sales tax?
Yeah.
You know, it is, I haven't read it very thick, but Fred said he basically copied what Bill Evans put forward in 2017, 16. And, you know, actually, he and I really were the ones supporting what he had on the ballot. You know, as a retailer, I really am very scared of sales taxes, but now that we can charge internet sales, sales tax. And it was fairly corporate. So I, and it was all the replaced property taxes.
I think this one is half to replace property taxes and half to fund public safety.
Yeah, I get very excited about the fund of public safety because we already do that under the tax cap. So you could potentially raise all this and just cut what you do out of the tax cap and spend that extra, this free up on anything else. So that makes me a little nervous. You know, it's a nice amount of sales tax, so we haven't really seemed to master it. But, you know, if you have a sales tax, a lot of places are, okay, we're going to bump it up a quarter of a penny, and we're going to put exactly this project, that project is done, and we take that off. So when you have that mechanism in place that lets you do that, so you're not borrowing, you're kind of handing these things up front off, and it's very versatile. We don't really have that tool now, so, you know, if you had a sales tax that, you know, covers, that replaces a lot of property taxes, but also allows you to do that, that would be nice. But we're getting ahead of ourselves in just public safety, and so do I.
Sorry to put you on the spot. I just, I didn't know anything about that. This is all lovely to me. Is there anything else I can try to help with? All right, well, I guess that's my time. I'm very grateful to be here, guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Imagine Girdwood. My name is listed here, but actually Amanda Sassy is going to speak to us.
Hello, I am Amanda Sassy. I'm with the Imagine Girdwood, which was formerly the Girdwood Area Plan Update Committee. We had our last meeting on December 4th. We kind of combined because of the holidays, the way our meetings fell, to be December 4th, which is usually earlier in the month than we usually do. During that time, we did, had presentations from Ford Valley Community School, the Girdwood Chapel, Tommy O'Malley, who talked about the Girdwood Arts Camp, the CERT team, and the Girdwood Cemetery. And Crystal Hope talked about potential community land trust. We also discussed a vacant, a vacant executive board seat, which will come up in the next meeting for elections. And a lot of the discussion focused on the Trails Committee's Trails Plan and how Girdwood Area Plan and the Trails Plan to move forward together. So we altered our schedule to push back more Trails presentations until we have a better understanding how we're going to move forward with the Trails Plan. And our next meeting is January 22nd, and we have changed those presentations to be transportation-focused. We will have Glacier Valley Transit and the DOT presenting. And it would be great to hear from anyone else about transportation, if you have any interest in coming and talking to us about that. Google Imagine Girdwood. Also, the, anyone that has anything they want to speak to about the secondary access road, that'd be a great place to possibly talk about that. And like I said, we'll have elections, and we're going to talk about the schedule and kind of focusing our efforts and how we're going to move forward, now that we've had a kind of a change in our board and seeing how presentations are going, so.
Any questions in the book? In the public? Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Next, we have Claire, library report.
Everyone, Claire Acme, I'm the Gairish Library Manager. Gairish Library was open 148 hours and had 2,327 visitors for the month of November. Let's see, coming up, this is our last week of storytimes from 2019. We'll take two weeks off and be back January 9th for baby time at 12, and January 10th for family storytime at 11. We have a lot of programs coming up. This Wednesday, we'll be doing Wax Wrap, Make Your Own Wax Wrap at 6:00 PM. We did it on, yeah, we did it on Saturday, and it was a lot of fun. We're doing it here Wednesday. I was going to say, last time, the fire department came, and we had a lot of fun. So please, everybody's welcome. All library programs are free and open to the public. I have a lot of fabric left, so, and a lot of wax. So Wax Wrap at 6 this Saturday, or, no, this Wednesday, sorry. Wednesday, 6 Wax Wrap. This Friday, Grinch Storytime, we'll be reading the book and watching the classic cartoon. So that's in place of our regular family storytime, Grinch Storytime, Friday at 11:00. The Saturday, we'll be jamming at 12, that's our music storytime for kids. And then after Christmas, Thursday, the 26th, we'll be screening the new PBS kids show Xavier Riddle and the Secret Museum at 1:00. Also that day, it's the day after Christmas, we'll be, have materials to make thank you cards all day in the library. It's always, it's really fun to do, and so we have lots of supplies, markers, crayons, stickers. Everybody's welcome to come make thank you cards all day in the library on the 26th. Reminder that I proctor, if you're taking online classes or you don't want to go into town for tests, I can proctor a test for you. Please have advanced warning. It does take time to set up. I have to be approved by an institution, so call me, 343-4024, or stop at the library to set that up. So holiday closures, we'll be closed for Christmas, Wednesday, and then we'll be closing an hour early on Christmas Eve at 5:00 PM and close for New Year's Day. As always, follow us on Facebook, facebook.com/aplGairish. We post news and events there. Stop at the library to get a physical calendar for events or just to talk and ask questions. Any questions tonight? All right, thanks.
Thank you. Kyle, Girdwood Manager, report.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Kelly. Quickly going to the parks. We've had, oh, we had a major storm a week ago, last week, last Monday, and we had several trees come down. We plan to tackle a lot of them this week, out of Beaver Pond in particular. But if you do see trees on any other trails, let us know. We're keeping inventory and try to tackle them as we go forward out there. The Lower Ditterod did get some damage from this recent storm with flooding down there. All repairable. We plan to tackle in the spring. We have the contractor, Andy Henlon, who helped us build it. He came down, we looked at it, and we have some ideas on how to deal with it. The section is the section right there next to California Creek, and that'll just probably be an ongoing thing that we'll have to maintain as it goes forward. It's part of the flood plain down there. We knew that way we built the trail, so. But we're happy to say the base of the trail really held, it's just mostly the top layer that went off. So that'll be repaired in the spring, but it's still able to get by on it. As always, we're working through a list of mostly office projects this time, getting ready for next spring, with planning on different projects from Lion's Club Park to Disc Golf and Skate Park. We did have a meeting with the friends of the skate park last week, and we narrowed down the projects that we're going to try to tackle this spring, and the work party most likely the first weekend in May, as we do each year, on May 2nd, as the weather allows, and not, we'll probably push it to the next weekend if the weather doesn't work. But the way the winter's going now, we should be able to start in March and get done out there. So it's going really well. On trails, as Carolyn mentioned, we are having a discussion about the hand tram, and we've asked from the staff, from us as staff for the Girdwood Trails Committee to conduct a vote in January to let us know if they would like to reopen the hand tram with the safety improvements that we have discussed. We've given them probably the heaviest hand of safety improvements, and then we've given versions that we probably recommend to do there that would be really functional without affecting or harming the use of the hand trams. So we do encourage people, if they have interest, to attend Trails Committee meeting in January to give input, learn more about what we're trying to do out there. And if they do decide that they want to move forward, then the next big thing to tackle will be the management plan of how to handle the hand tram. Right now, all the management falls back on our office. That's basically, when I say our office, Margaret and I, and we handle, just besides parks, we handle many other things. So going forward, we need to figure out a better management plan on how to handle it when incidents happen and just general maintenance. So still a lot of work to be done there. With the Virgin Creek Trail, that is a main focus for us this year to fix that. With the Virgin Creek Trail, that is a main focus for us this year to fix that. If you haven't been up there in a while, the Virgin Creek Trail has gotten very eroded from use. People, lots of spider webs of trails up there. We'd like to put a major focus into that next summer and contain the pathway back down. And that's just helping people to get around muddy spots. They tend to go all around to try to get past the mud. If we can help them build a path which they don't get muddy in, it should work better up there. As well, we want to tackle some of the traffic issues that Virgin Creek's bringing to Timberline and those who live on Timberline, and so that will be a step process to figure out how to do that. But I think at the very least, we can come up with some quick measures to remind people that they're on a residential neighborhood street, not Aliaska Highway or the Superhighway out there. So we'll be working through those. Those are big projects ahead of us for this coming year out there. And we'd like to also thank Bob and Cherry Dugan. They have given us a generous donation for the Virgin Creek Trails Project. They just did it last week, and we appreciate their efforts in supporting the trails and especially the Virgin Creek Project going forward. So a big thank you to them. Nonprofit grants, the GBOS nonprofit grants, request for revision forms for the grantees for the 2020 grants have been sent out, and year-end reports will be sent in soon, and that should be completed in early 2020 for the 2019 grants. As for grants ourselves that we applied for, we have right now a submission in for RTP Grant, that's a Recreation Trails Program Grant for the state, which is funded through federal funding from the Federal Highways Administration. We have a $75,000 grant in there to finish the last section of the Lower Ditterod, and so we'll be hearing more about that after the new year. And then we have several grants that we've either closed up or we still have to finish out next spring to finish our trail work out there. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and our websites up to date, and you'll find all our agendas and meeting minutes on there as well. Switching over to roads, as I did mention, we had a pretty significant storm last week with five, over five inches of rain in 36 hours and wind gusts here in the valley, about 50-plus miles per hour and the top of max is at 118 for a top max, a top blow. It brought down a lot of trees. We had 12 trees that we had to deal with over two days, removing. We had a whole cluster of trees that came down the mine roads and cut off about five houses down there. We had great response from Tall Trees and Greatland Tree Service. They responded, they're all in off-season, so they pulled people together and they came down, and were able to get those trees out of the way, and then we spent about a couple days cleaning up afterwards. The drainages did well, we had moderate damage. Our most, probably most significant damage was on Echo Ridge, where the stream, or the drainage jumped out of the ditch, went off the rails. And then we also found that underground stream, which had a French drain system in it, just became overwhelmed and shot straight up, and it carved out a lot of the road. But thank you to the contractor, Coolico, and particularly the greater operator, Ted. They put the whole road back together in about 24 hours and had it functional, and actually looks better than it was before. So it was challenging conditions because the roads were still frozen and still had packed ice in many areas. And so as we're trying to grade, we're peeling ice and picking up gravel, so we luckily had a emergency supply of recycled asphalt in the yard, and we pulled out about half of that to repair the roads, including today with grading and trying to get the roads back after the continued rain we've had. But it seems that we are maybe on a switch here with weather patterns going forward and allow us to catch up and maybe let the roads freeze again and get back to maybe a winter operation. But until then, we'll just keep grading and maintaining and hope for better weather, especially for the holiday stretch here coming up. So work completed since the last meeting. We removed and chipped down trees, we pothole patched, drainage repairs, grading, sanding. Finally got the wood lot and tree, or the brushing from the roads mulched that got completed today by Alaska Hydroax. And then we had actually one snow removal event, we did a full snow removal. That was wonderful, and hopefully get back to that, so. Thanksgiving Day. As for major projects, the Aliaska Highway pedestrian crosswalk here at Egloff and Hightower is pretty much complete. We had a grand opening on Friday, and every grade from K through 8 came out in four different waves, and they got orientation on how the system works. They actually crossed and pushed buttons at each corner, and the kids had the concept down right away. They knew that if they pushed the buttons, it's not a green light to run. They knew they had to wait and make sure the cars wait. I asked them, what would be a distraction for the driver not to see the intersection? And they said texting. I was like, oh, they hear the message out there, so. So it was good, it was very good. So we appreciate the kids coming out, we appreciate the school organizing that event, and then I heard from the kids, it was great because they got the guy out of classroom, even though it was raining sideways, especially on the morning shift when we had the K through 3 out there. But they were so into it, and they didn't care, there was no crying, they were wet as a dog. The Little Bears Glacier City Hall replacement project and bond initiative. And the packets today have included what the bond language is going to look like and what you're going to see on the ballot. We had to work with the lawyers. Originally, when we got it, it wasn't very clear that Girdwood was going to pay for this bond, and that we just needed the support of the whole municipality, but the rest of the municipality outside the service area would not be paying on this. So we got the language to be more specific about that and point that out, as you'll see in there. And the bond does also address the amount of, that we would not exceed to pay for the annual operations and maintenance costs on that there. Once again, that would be covered by the service area in that aspect. So I do have a question in about that. We already paid for that through IGC, but I think that's would still be standard if this building went up. With it being a new building, it should be much more efficient, and with it being leased out to Little Bears, they would actually be paying most of the operational costs, electricity, gas, the utilities associated with it, and then we would be paying for any maintenance needs it needs, but if it's built right, it shouldn't need it for several years going forward. Just wanted to share this language with you so you can see this, and this will be going in front of the assembly tomorrow as introduction, and then they will have a public comment and review on January 7th at their next regular meeting after the holidays. Moving into expenses and budget, last month with the road contractor, we spent $18,000. It's our lowest of the year, but there wasn't a lot going on in November, so that reflects that. Mostly, it actually was more like fall maintenance than we normally do in October and September. The bill will be a little bit more this month. We've been much more aggressive, like today, two graders running, just trying to, our window of light is very short during the day, and then we're also trying to get around the freezing at night, so we're condensing our work time as much as we can as we have the opportunity to especially push dirt around. So far for the year, we spent $471,000 with the contractor, and we have one more billing to go here for December to wrap up the year. We've used 91% of the public's or the road street maintenance budget, and so we're right on track to be having quite a surplus there by year end. And in parks, we spent 82% there. We do still have some lingering bills to finish out the year, but once again, we should be under budget for parks. And then police, we spent 82%, we have two bills to pay right now. The November bill for Whittier Police should be in the mail, and then once December finishes, we'll pay the December bill for the Whittier Police, and we should be under budget there. And then fire, we're at 89%, and tonight we'll be talking more about the fire budget, but for the most part, we shouldn't overrun that budget there, so. And that's all I got. Any questions?
Chair, I'll start. The language on the, on the bond is horrific. There's this whole section on raising tax caps, and it just raises so many red flags, it's for $7,000 in total. It's, although the way it's written, it's almost guaranteed to fail, I would say, for the sake of, I think, $1.19 for $100,000 across the, across Girdwood. It doesn't even make it clear that it's paid just by Girdwood, that part. So I would, I would not support this as it stands now. I think it needs to be, it needs to be rewritten so it actually reflects what the plan is not, what this hypothetical raising tax cap, you know, might have to be, because it won't.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand your particular problem, is it with the $7,000?
My problem is that it makes it clear that the bond itself is paid for by Girdwood. It then has this whole section about raising, potentially raising tax caps to raise this extra money. And it says, I think, that it'll be limited to $7,000. It does not make it clear whether that's per taxpayer. In total, I had to do some calculations to work out what it meant myself, and it's extremely unclear. It adds, it just sets off a whole bunch of red flags. If I'm reading this without understanding it, I would say it looks like the immunity tax cap is going to be exceeded, this is the way to do that. It just, it's just really poorly drafted.
And I would have a comment on that. Talking with John, normally when a municipality has something like this, they have to include that language because they're at the top of their tax cap. We're not.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not increasing it. We don't want to increase our tax cap.
We don't need to.
We don't need to. So I agree, we need to get that language out of there.
Okay. I'll work on that tomorrow.
And John, you can help.
Because it'll be introduced, so we'll have to change it between now and next meeting.
What's the procedure? Does this get pulled out as an item to discuss tomorrow, or does it just go through as introduction?
I think for this, we just introduce it, and then it'll be introduced, and then comments, and then if we can, you know, have an event ready for the first meeting in January.
Yeah, I'll work with finance, because they're the ones who worked on them.
Some items, I know some items in that section just get basically approved as consent and go straight through that public hearing without any changes. We obviously do want changes here.
Well, it's in that F section, all of that is a public hearing. It's the same, and it says on there, if we want to change that, we're very different from that.
I don't think we can, because it has to be on by the 14th, doesn't it? I think it has to be done by the 14th of January.
I think we have, I think we go a little bit later, but then in January. So there's mine, but if we can do it, it's easy to do. We're not allowed to do it by the 14th, so.
We'll find out.
It's easy to change it.
Definitely tried to change some of those things, but we got bumped back by the balance account lawyer or something.
Can I ask what?
We tried to make it more specific, that it be a community-owned building. They said municipality-owned building, so we couldn't do that.
Don't we have an MOA or an MOU regarding the owner versus operation of the facility?
I think it's, it wouldn't be owned, you're saying it wouldn't be owned by GBSA, it would be owned by the MOA?
It's owned by the municipality. GBSA's Department of County.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do. Noting that, you know, you've been kind of bored over the past 10 days, you haven't had really anything to do. Following up on the hand tram conversation we started at the Trails Committee this month, have you had a chance to engage with the Forest Service and with Aliaska about future maintenance operations and shared services to take the burden off?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay, great. And then, I'll write down my second question, so there you go.
I had a couple things too. One's on the hand tram. So you said Trails Committee will vote on which improvements we want to make. Does any of that have to go through anyone else in the NAMI, like for review?
Yes. I mean, we'll go through risk management, we'll go through the administration. We'll come actually bring it to GBOS because eventually we would have to ask you for all the funding to make it work. So as advisory committee to GBOS, then bring it up here. And then, you know, the biggest point that Bill Falzey made is he wanted to know what Girdwood wanted. And so Trails Committee is the logical place to start and to bring it on up, and then eventually some administration will take a look at it as well.
And then the other thing was, I just wanted to say thanks for your hard work and the roads crew for fixing Echo Ridge so fast, and also for you to come, coming up the night before to put cones up so that one would drive in the ditch.
Yeah, it was pretty bad.
After the land needs needed. Man of many hats.
Oh, thank you.
I'd just say the same thing, thanks. Kyle works very hard with the road crews to keep our roads up, and it's been very challenging over this past week, and all the ditching and all the culverts they put in the summer over the last few years. You know, they made this event a lot less impactful than it could have been, and we've, you know, we've seen, we've seen pictures of Oscar when it happened. It was a lot more impactful back then, and we didn't have the culverts, we didn't have the ditching, and it just all piled up. Thanks for all the hard work.
That was a giant storm. I mean, but the system did so well, you know, we had five inches of rain in 36 hours. I think it was seven inches over 72 hours.
And thanks.
No problem, thank you.
So no need for a water, wastewater utility yet, or a stormwater utility yet, we have Kyle. Thank you. Okay, next on to supervisor reports. Public Safety, Jerry.
I was not at the last Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting, I was out of town. I don't have a lot to, anything to report, really. I'm going to turn it over to the chief. The only thing I'll say is I believe the contract is all signed, is that correct?
Correct.
We're all set. That's a good thing.
Yes.
Good evening. Just a quick breakdown for November stats for Girdwood Service Area. Total calls for service at Whittier Police Department respond to 95. Majority of those calls were 44 were traffic calls, and that again is after the request of the GBOS for us to increase our traffic enforcement. That includes traffic stops, accidents, suspicious reckless driving, those types. The other incidents were security checks during downtime, roughly 19 security checks from residents to businesses in Girdwood Service Areas. Suspicious activity contacts, six. Property offenses, seven. Assault disturbances, two. Welfare checks, five. Patrol requests, one. Civil issues, two, and nine others, which were rioting, set from assisting fire, things of that nature. Other things, throughout the last two weeks, it was busy, like Monday, we had a storm on both sides of Girdwood and Whittier. So we were fortunate during that time, that was one of the days we had three officer presence in a 24-hour period, so we maintained two officer presence roughly almost 24 hours continually here. One as a backup standby officer, one on duty. And in the Whittier area, we had maintained one on duty there and one standby area, so we was able to help both sides. We got the notification from Michelle that actually went out to a mass email listing basically of the issues here, so we contacted Michelle just to give her our contact information and let her know there, they will be an officer on this side. Couple other things, during the month of November, we also had, the Whittier Police Department hosted a basic advanced crime scene class for law enforcement. We hosted that in Whittier. Participants included roughly 10 APD patrol personnel, some state troopers, as well as outside municipal police officers. The advantage on that is since APD is our closest partner that we work with quite a bit, it gives our officers opportunity to work with them and network, so put basis names and times. That was quite successful, it was a three-day class in Whittier. Other things that happened is this last Friday, we go open the pedestrian crosswalk, Kyle sent us the times, which was basically for scheduled blocks instruction. One was in the morning time for the K through, League 3, and then the afternoon for three other blocks, maintaining an officer there just to show a visible presence while especially the kids are first time using the crosswalk. With that, we're going to continue our service to your area here, or our area. We did sign on November 25th, the Whittier City Council did acknowledge and sign the Girdwood Service Contract Agreement, and then a few days later, I believe, City Manager Jim Hunt signed our paperwork, sent it over to Kyle to get everything official and ratified. Other than that, other events that happened, we maintained extra staffing for this last Friday with the opening of the resort, just in case, we weren't sure what's going to happen with this individual skiing out there, so we had extra personnel here just in case there's some issues. We tried to, I really appreciate Kyle and Margaret putting together the events that comes up and emails, so we had little heads up, we could actually make our staffing work out better for that. So other than that, any questions for me?
One question, there was a locally well-publicized vehicle theft from the driveway just a few days ago. Have you, is this?
It's what we, it's coincidentally, I don't believe the vehicle's been recovered yet, I haven't got an update on that. But the one thing is, the biggest thing we tell everyone, you may be a small community, but you have arterial entries, and your people come here from Anchorage. Lock your cars, take the keys out of the ignition. Number one, that's the biggest preventative aspect. I have to be in an anchored area, I have to train my kids because I have my, my security camera sees some people opening doors at over dark during the morning, try to grab whatever's in there. Lock doors, take the keys out of the vehicle, because these are crimes of opportunity, you know, so that's the easiest way to do that. Officers are still doing their periodic security check, that's why, you know, in downtime, they try to do security checks as much as they can. So please, that not only helps you, but helps us prevent these types of crimes of opportunity.
And on the agenda... And on the agenda, it has always been interim and I'm understanding.
I am officially, as of the 25th last month, the full time.
So we can change that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Any, anything from, do we have any members of Public Safety Advisory Committee out there? See them, Jim. Roads and Utilities, James is absent. I did have some questions about Utilities, but that can wait. Parks Recreation Cemetery, Christina.
I will echo what Carolyn had to say, but I'll also let people know that the Gerwood Trails Committee is a great place to voice what you would like to see as a priority for our work plan in 2020. We had some persons come and talk about what trails they think need to be priorities, those that need love. So if you have a favorite trail in Gerwood that you would like maintained, please come to the January 7th Gerwood Trails Committee meeting. Since Brian's not here, I will advocate that it is before the land use committee meeting. So if you are looking for a leadership position within the community, highly encourage, especially those out in radio land, I mean, it's not often you can live in a community that the day after the holiday, you can come to the library and make thank you cards, or that the fire department can bring the CPR dummy to the brewery so people can learn CPR while having a brew, or that you have private donors that give to a trailhead that is in desperate need of repair. So if you have a couple of hours in your month, please consider taking on a leadership position. Again, the Gerwood Trails Committee, the land use, and even Imagine Gerwood. And if you don't like looking at me or looking at Mike, both of our seats are up this spring as well. So consider joining Gerwood Board of Supervisors. So encourage your engagement, especially if you're a young person that has some additional time and is looking for a leadership opportunity. We really appreciate hearing from you and we do take into consideration your comments. And I was really appreciative of those who showed up to the Gerwood Trails Committee earlier this month and who did say that they didn't want the hand tram reopened. It's good to hear those types of differing opinions and introduce those into the dialogue about assets that we manage and that our tax dollars pay for. So consider being part of the Gerwood Trails Committee meeting. Again, that is the 7th of January. And if you have any other interest in other leadership positions, land use, Imagine Gerwood, and Gerwood Board of Supervisors all have openings in the coming year. Thank you.
Flight Department, Derek.
We had a couple of fire department meetings this last week. One was a special meeting with GBOS to discuss the 2019 operating budget shortfall. And we'll be talking more about that later in the meeting, so I won't talk about that now. And then the Board of Directors had a meeting also last week. And they discussed the election planning for the Board of Directors, which will be in April next year. They've already started planning, I think they're going to talk about that tonight also. And also, we talked about getting the AFD contract negotiations back up and running in January. And then, Michelle, do you want to?
Sure. Hi there, Michelle Weston, Fire Chief, and I have Sarah Howard and Steve Turkington with me and they're going to talk about the Fire Department nonprofit election before I start.
Hi, my name's Steve, volunteer firefighter with the department here, also a member of the Member Advisory Committee. We just wanted to announce that we have open nominations for two Board Director seats that will be coming up in the next election cycle, which will be April 7th, is what we're planning on currently. So these are two seats. They will both be for four-year terms, which will be ending in 2024. The seats that are expiring is going to be the board seat and then our treasurer, but it's internally organized, so once elected that part, it's not like you're stuck with those positions necessarily. For nominations, please mail them to the Fire Department with the attention to the Member Advisory Committee, our P O box is 915. Or you can shoot us an email at mac@gerwoodfire.com. That's M A C, like mac and cheese, and that'll, that'll get to us. Please provide a biography, short biography, current address, and your contact information. The bios we use for the election process, just so the community can know a little more about you if they don't already. Let's see here. Other than that, considerations, you have to be legal voting age and residing in the Gerwood Valley Service area. If you live in Anchorage or something, that is an option if you have a P O box here in Gerwood. So yeah, the open nomination will close January 26th, so we have a couple, over a month to work with it. So after the holidays are done, if you want to work through your bio and send it off to us, that's perfectly fine. You can also shoot us an email at mac@gerwoodfire.com just to let us know that you're interested and we'll get that information to us a little later. Any questions?
How does the election actually work? Now, the municipal elections, that same day, are voted by mail.
Correct.
How are you, how are you running this?
So for this one, it will most likely not be a mail-in election for the Board Directors here at the Fire Department. In the past, what we've done is set up a table here in the community center. We're still working through details on that and maybe something similar to that over at the post office, we're still working through details. But while we have the open nominations, just wanted to get that information out for everybody and then we'll work through the details on that.
Okay.
That'll be finalized.
That makes sense.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, so responses, we're currently, our next run is going to be our 484th call for the year. So we have an uptick, we've sort of had a slow little bit of November and now we're up, we've had about 10 calls in the last seven days. We've also had sort of a general increase in people acting oddly. I don't know if Woodyer Police have seen that?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are some of those welfare checks.
Yes, yes. So I don't know what's going on, I don't know if it's lack of snow, but people have been acting slightly odd. So just FYI, we still need, speaking of people acting odd, we still need people to join the Gerwood Fire Department desperately from Gerwood. And so our info session will be on January 11th at 10:00 AM, I believe. We didn't have anybody show up for the December 11th one in the evening, so we really, again, need Gerwood residents to come. I want to thank Alyeska Resort, Gerwood Clinic, and Gerwood Brewing for employing our volunteer firefighters. Thank you. And then I want to also bring to attention that in the past year, our volunteers have provided 23,000, over 23,000 of hours of service, free service standing by for calls here. And so if you actually put a number at that, if you put a number of that at a volunteer sort of paid part-time rate, it would be about $529,000 worth of free labor that Gerwood Fire Service Area is getting. If you put a IFF union rate to that, it would be over a million dollars of labor that the department, that the Fire Service Area is getting from our volunteers. We just last, just yesterday, finished EMT 2 class, so thank you to everybody that volunteered arms and hands to get stuck with IVs. It's kind of one of those classes that goes through and people have to sacrifice arms to get people up to speed on IVs, so thank you for that. So we have five new EMT 2s and we also had two Homer students there as well from Homer Fire in the class. And other than that, our officers have been doing an ongoing coaching and counseling session with AFD's Assistant Chief Boyd. We had over 500 people attend Community Thanksgiving, so thank you to the nonprofits in Gerwood for helping us with that event. Our membership is currently at 40% Gerwood residents. We really need to be at 60 or 70% Gerwood residents. I mean, ideally, we need to be at 100% Gerwood residents, but realistic, really, we're at 40. It hasn't improved in the last, next, in the last year. And then we also have actually 30% female firefighters and that's one of the highest level of firefighter participation by females in the U.S., so super happy about that. We have just scheduled the beer and CPR event at the brewery on Thursday, the 6th.
January 9th, 6:00 PM.
There we go. That's what we're going to do. So that will be a fun way, it won't be a carded CPR, but it'll be a fun way to learn CPR. And then we're also hoping, once we get snow again, to do fire extinguisher training. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Michelle. Chief Weston, sorry. Land use, that's me. I think that the items in the meeting were covered by Brian. We have a Title 21, Chapter 9 update group. We have parking, changes to commercial onsite parking, which are currently within municipality and going through that process. We also chair a housing working group. We had a great meeting last Wednesday where we went through a variety of potential solutions to housing issues within the community. We're probably, over the course of the next six months to a year, we're probably going to move this to a slightly more formal thing and actually try and put together a housing plan at some point. That will depend really how the, how the area plan work is going. They should follow, it should follow one from recommendations from the area plan. We might slightly preempt it with some of that work. We discussed the potential community land trust, short-term rental regulation, and the status of the ADU changes we've proposed as well. That's it, I think, on the housing working group. Any questions? Okay, so now we'll move on to public comment. Person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone like to? Public comment? Yep, please. Do not touch the microphone.
Say what?
Do not touch the microphone. That's the one rule we have.
Yeah, I already got it.
Just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Clift, also known as Care Clift, and I live in District 27, which is part of District N. I live at Hampton Drive, which is near Baxter Bog. And I'm running for State Senate, District N. I've appeared at several community council meetings already, so John has saved me many times. And I have run for office before. I ran for governor five years ago as a Libertarian and I was put in to run for Lieutenant Governor last year as a Libertarian because we didn't have anybody running for Lieutenant Governor. But now I'm undeclared. I dropped my Libertarian registration and I'm undeclared. And I'm running on a petition. So I'm not going to ask you guys anything about this, but if you see me with a petition like this, I need to get 200 signatures. I'm trying to get at least 250 and I have until August, so it's not like it's a huge imposition. But in order to get on the ballot, since I'm not running with a party, I will have to run with signatures on a petition. So today, I camped out at the subway for a couple hours and I talked to a lot of interesting people, but most of them were from out of town. So they were fun to talk to and I had a great time and cookies were enjoyed by all at the subway. So I will do that again because that was fun. On my website, which, my card is back there on the table and I try to give cards out to everybody I talked to before the meeting, you will see my biography. I've lived in Alaska for 40 years. My husband and I came up from Arizona. We were both reading specialists. We both have master's degrees in reading education from Arizona. And I worked for one year as an elementary teacher and then I took some time off to have children because that was part of my dream. So when I actually had a chance to have children, that I would be a stay-at-home mom for a while. So I did that and I did a lot of odd jobs, like I was a health aide, the community schools coordinator, I ran the daycare center, so I did a lot of payroll. And it was, it was really, really an interesting life. And then, long story short, I took distance delivery courses from the University of Alaska Anchorage and became a special education teacher and did my practicum in Anchorage and I was hired. And I worked for Anchorage School District for 14 years, full-time, preschool through seventh grade, preschool through sixth grade, and then I was rehired as retired teacher for half-time at Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. So I learned a lot about all kinds of different students and how they learn and a lot about cultural things too that I actually knew a lot about because of living in the bush in Antioch for so long. So I have a pretty diverse background in what Alaska needs. And I've been traveling throughout the district trying to talk to people and find out what the big issues are. And it's funny because it's completely different on this side of the mountain from what we have on the other side of the mountain. And it's, it's really different. So I want to hear from you and I want to hear about your issues. And I know I'm trying to keep this down to three minutes, so I will say that you can find out a lot of stuff from my website, which is www.carecliffforalaska.com and the cards are back there. And I would love to have you guys send emails to me at carecliff@gmail.com and tell me what are your most important issues. And like I said, I've been going around on the south side and I was attorney general in community council last week and a lot of issues with the Seward Highway and transportation came up. So I think that that is something that we do need to address at the state. My major issues, I am for the full statutory PFD. I am against the binding caucus. A lot of people have asked me which caucus I would join since I'm independent of the Democrats and the Republicans. And the answer is, I really don't want to join a binding caucus. I think that when you elect someone to be your representative, you want them to be able to vote freely and keep their constituents in mind and vote for the things that they talked about when they were running. So that's really important to me. Access to the legislature, that is really important to me. And I will propose that for at least a month of the regular session, that we bring the legislature to South Central on the road system so that people can come and see their legislatures during session. Because I think it's very hard for people when they have no access to their legislatures. And I know the television is great, you can watch them in session on the TV, but it's not the same as sitting down and talking to your legislature about the things that you find really important. I am also a big advocate of everybody getting their rights and I differ a lot from our current governor on some of those things. So yeah, I'll be glad to take questions. I don't know how much longer we're going to be in session here, but I'll stick around as long as I can. And you guys can talk to me afterwards. Also have some index cards and you can write down what you, what you think, what issues that you'd like to discuss with me or email me with your issues.
Thank you.
Give everybody a personal answer. Thank you.
Any quick, I would, one unsolicited campaign advice, which I'm sure John Reddleton will support. The best place to catch people is outside the post office Saturday morning.
Outside the post office on Saturday morning.
Do you agree, John? Yeah. That's the secret.
At what time? By the time I fly?
Our office is open from 10 to 12, but being there from 9 to 12 would be very advantageous.
Oh, okay.
There'll be an invoice in the mail. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
It was a little over three minutes, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
Then we move on to all business. Agenda item LUC 191104, Historic Preservation Efforts in Gerwood Valley. Kyle.
So with the process of replacing or looking at replacing these two buildings over here, the historic preservation has kind of been dusted off. And one of the efforts that we are working with through the Historic Preservation Commission is identify ways to preserve the history of those buildings over there between the fire service and then the even longer child development services that have been prior is identify ways to preserve the history of those buildings over there between the fire service and then the even longer child development services that have been private there. So in the back of the room here, this is a presentation board that we presented at the Gerwood PTA Holiday Bazaar and allowed for people to understand what historic preservation is. It's not like a red light to development. It's just a way to capture the history that's happened in our valley. And back there on the table, there is a list of different projects that we are considering to use for historic preservation of those buildings. And if you have time tonight, you can go up there, you can mark the sheet, you can mark it with the different colors where you think is a priority and what you think is a second priority. That really helps us to narrow down a project. We got great feedback at the bazaar, and we're continuing that process. And it also talks about other things that we've done in the valley so far for historic preservation that is ongoing. So with that, we'll be removing this from the agenda after this meeting tonight, but we want to make sure that we're getting input from the community. And so that's why we have that set up back there.
Any questions? Where is the feedback? Is the feedback being collected? Will it be published?
Yes, we're working with both the commission members from here in town, Connor and Julie, and we will always publish what we have on our website, the GBOS website, that is. And then, once we narrow it down, we'll probably come back and make a presentation of what project we recommend moving forward. So far, the biggest feedback we've seen is a display or interpretive panel that talks about what the buildings were, what they meant to the community.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kyle. Move on to agenda item LUC 1911-06, Second Presentation by Gerdwood Brewing Company. Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Code Changes to Allow Food Concessions in the Area Zoned GC10 by Adding a P to GC10 in Table 21.09-02, Table of allowable Uses. Josh and Rory are presenting.
Yeah, I'm Josh Hagnow. My partner Rory are co-founders of Gerdwood Brewing Company. We're here tonight, like Mike said, to ask for resolution of support to allow food trucks. For those of you that don't know, we are putting amendment to a conditional use permit, and it was flagged that we are not allowed to currently have food trucks, even though we've been operating them for a couple of years, so we've suspended food truck operations until we get this passed, trying to do the right thing, and just hoping the GBOS can come through tonight. So I think Rory, we had a quick change on the amendment.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't review the resolution of support earlier, but it appears that the table referenced in the resolution of support is from the old code. Thinking 2014 or something, they updated it. Because it references 21.09-050-1, and the current table is the 21.09-202. I haven't copied that. So basically, we just amend every mention of 21.09.050-1 with 21.09-2.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah.
I move to support Resolution 2019-19 with the amendment, global amendment, to correct the code citation.
Second. Okay, I'll read it. I should have read this before we did the motion, I suppose. I will read it anyway. Read it into the record.
Can you read it?
Do you want me to read it?
Oh, please, someone else can read it.
Yeah, sure.
And my voice.
Resolution 2019-19 of the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors. Resolution in support of the code change to allow food and beverage kiosk in the area zone GC10 by adding a P to the GC10-21-9-050-2, Table of allowable uses. Whereas Gerdwood Brewing Company owner Shoshekna and Rory Marinco have presented to the Gerdwood Land use committee and to the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors their plan for food trucks to be permitted in GC10 zone. And whereas food trucks benefit the local community and its visitor-based economy and should be promoted. And whereas four local Gerdwood small businesses own food trucks, and whereas the Gerdwood Commercial zoning district GC10 would be the appropriate district to allow food trucks. And whereas per municipal code title 21-21.09.050-2, Table of allowable uses, the petitioners as that G boss support their request that the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the approval of an ordinance as drafted by the Planning Department for a text change in Chapter 21.09 Gerdwood Land use Regulations to amend 21.09.050-2, Table of allowable uses to include a P under GC10 zone to allow food and beverage kiosk for this purpose, specifically food trucks. And whereas if the Planning and Zoning Commission allows, excuse me, recommends approval of the ordinance, it would be then scheduled for a public hearing with the Municipality of Anchorage Assembly where it would be adopted to take an effect. And whereas the Gerdwood Land use committee has reviewed in the requests at the public meetings in November and December 2019 and has voted to recommend a Gerdwood Board of Supervisors Resolution for Support for the action by a vote of 15 in favor, zero opposed, and two abstaining. Therefore, it is resolved the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors to support an amendment to the anchor to municipal code title 21.09 Gerdwood Land use Regulations to amend 21.09.050-2, Table of allowable uses to include a P under the GC10 zone to allow food trucks, food and beverage kiosk for the purpose, specifically food trucks. Passed and approved by the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors by a vote of X to X this day, the 16th of December 2019.
Second.
I have one question. I just, I was reading the minutes from our last meeting. It says there are five food trucks.
Yeah, I was going to say.
There's a fifth one that he's not quite there.
Yeah, he's not.
He started out because of us, but Toby from the sushi place. It's going to be a ramen food truck.
So should we leave it at four? Should we make it five?
I don't know his operational...
He's not, he's not. So I think keeping it four is probably the safe thing.
We'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments from the board?
I need food.
I need food, Rory.
Yeah, I mean, this should have been in there already. There are many drafting errors in Title 21.02. Any other comments from the community, the public?
Ready to vote?
Yep, let's see. So, call for the vote. Four to zero.
We really appreciate this, you guys, and we look forward to getting in front of meeting planning zoning, hopefully get this thing moving along, put those food trucks back on.
Thank you. Thanks.
Let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item LUC 1911-07, Second Presentation Regarding Parking Restrictions in Gerdwood in particular related to Echo Ridge Drive and Garmisch Road. Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Placement of No Parking Signs on One of These Streets. Kyle.
One side of the streets.
So this is particularly response to parking issues that have been going on at Echo Ridge and related to short-term rentals up there. There's several short-term rental vacation homes on that hill, and parking on the street has become a nuisance and also a safety hazard where emergency vehicles possibly couldn't get by with certain events. And so the neighborhood has requested for no parking signs to be installed on one side of the street. The street side has not been determined yet, but I would say we would work with the neighborhood to find out which street side they would prefer and then go from there to get the signs installed. We've talked with traffic engineering department, and they have just particularly dealt with the same issue up in Bear Valley with hikers up there going to Chugash State Park, and they installed signs. The sign would probably just be one sign at the base of Echo Ridge to limit the amount of signs that can get damaged. But then that would clearly mark as you enter Echo Ridge, there's no street parking on a particular side. If we narrow it down to one side, we may need more signs going up. But we would want to limit how many signs we put out there because I just know with snow maintenance, they get lost after a while. But if the street is marked, then that gives more enforcement to Whittier PD to enforce it and easily ticket on it if people do not comply in that aspect. So we would like GBOS to support land use, give us approval, and then we can move that forward to traffic and then get those signs probably installed in the spring.
When you say one side on Echo Ridge, I wonder if it should be more, but definitely on Garmisch, it should be at least one at the end of each block.
Correct.
So there'll be, what, six there or four?
Yeah, I think we would determine where we would put signs. I agree with you on Echo Ridge that we probably need more because it's a long route, and it's easy to miss it. You turn the corner, they're going up. So we would try to find safe spots that we know that most likely those signs would survive for years to come. And then with St. Mirk, with Garmisch, it may be a little bit more aggressive there. It's just because people, they know exactly where the no parking signs stop, and then they park there. And so we would have to take a look at that just to make it more aggressive. But in the end, now that under the new contract, and especially at the beginning of the year, we'll be working directly with Whittier to get them set up with the ticketing process. If enforcement is happening and a ticket's getting written, then that's going to send a message to them.
Want to read it?
I'm sorry.
I have one other comment or addition to my disclosure, I guess, because I was reading the minutes from last meeting, which I wasn't at, and seeing that it came from the discussion about short-term rentals. I also sometimes have a short-term rental, so I don't know if that makes me more possibly biased.
Don't park in the street. I don't see that at the moment. That was the original motivation, but this is all about parking.
Those might be the drivers, but this is an overall...
Could affect everyone on the vote, I guess, whether you have a short-term rental.
I sort of think it rises to a significant conflict. It's definitely a private interest, but it's not a significant conflict. So I stick by my earlier decision. Volunteer to read?
I can read. Resolution 2019-20, Board of Supervisors. Resolution of support for placement of no parking signs on one side of the road on Echo Ridge Drive and Garmisch Road. Whereas the Board of Gerdwood Public Safety Advisory Committee, Gerdwood Housing Committee, Gerdwood Land Use Committee have heard a variety of comments from residents of Echo Ridge Drive and Garmisch Road regarding safety concerns stemming from parking overflow on these two roads. And whereas Echo Ridge Drive is of high concern due to the density of large homes used for short-term rental, narrow road bed, and steep slope of the road. And whereas Garmisch Road is of high concern due to the proximity of parking area at Alyeska Resorts, Daylight, and Lower Mountain Lifts. And whereas in reviewing these concerns, Municipal Parking Engineers supported parking restriction on both sides of the roads. And whereas residents have expressed support for restricting parking to parking on one side of the road. And whereas Gerdwood Volunteer Fire and Rescue have confirmed that emergency vehicle access is not impeded by vehicles responsibly parked on a single side Garmisch Road or Echo Ridge Drive. And whereas with the new Whittier Police Services contract, Whittier Police Department will have the authority to enforce sign parking restrictions. And whereas Gerdwood Valley Service Area has the authority under AMC 27.20.110 to spend funds on road maintenance, including signage. Therefore, based on discussions at various subcommittees and a recommendation by the Land Use Committee at the regular meeting of December 9th, 2019 by a vote of 15 in favor, zero opposed, and troops stating the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors resolves to for placement of no parking signs on one side of the road on Echo Ridge Drive and Garmisch Road. Passed and approved by X to X the 16th day of December 2019.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
May I make an edit and maybe remove this line in here where it says, whereas Gerdwood Valley Service Area has the authority under AMC to spend on road maintenance and including signage. I would remove the signage because the signage is an area-wide feature. And so when we go forward on this, if it does pass, we want the area-wide to pay for it. We don't want it coming out of our budget for that. So maybe remove the whole line or just remove the including signage.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the words "including signage" from the last whereas phrase of the Resolution 2019-20.
Stop proposing an amendment. Do you hear a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Right, that line has disappeared. Back to the main motion, as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing number moved to the vote. Those in favor? Four to zero. Excellent, thank you. Item number 10, review, we don't have an agenda item for this, agenda item list. Review and vote on the motion to move $25,000 from the unused 2019 GBSA GVR account, 501-380, repair and maintenance supplies, and to provide a bridging loan of $36,000 from the GBOS GFR account, 580-380, capital account, understanding the bridging loan will be reimbursed in full by GFR in 2020 with $29,000, $2019 revenues. Who's presenting on this? Senator Michelle? Good question.
Hi there, through the chair. We did have a work session on this, so if you have any additional comments on that. Gerdwood, the fire budget is over this year, and so we need a bridging loan of $61,000. $25,000 is available, as I mentioned in the work session, from AFD from the parts allocation because we didn't use that on parts for the fire trucks. So $25,000 is available from AFD, which AFD told me did not require Gerdwood Board of Supervisors approval. And then in addition, $36,000 reallocation from the capital contribution, which normally would have been for 2019, $74,121. And then I'm proposing, because we brought in this year $34,813 in revenues, which we've never had before, from billing Kenai Peninsula Borough and City of Whittier and also Forest Street deployment, I'm proposing that in 2020, since those 2019 revenues are not available according to AFD until 2020, we appropriate those for the capital contribution along with the remainder of the other $74,121. So the difference would be as a capital contribution for 2019, although made in 2020, which would be a difference or a short change of $1,187 from the original contribution amount for 2019.
Any questions from the board?
Well, I just wanted to highlight, because Michelle went through a lot of this with us in more detail last week. And, you know, there's, we've talked a lot about fire department budget over the last couple of years. But she put together a really good summary slide that shows the 2018 budget comparing to 2019. And that difference is about $11,000. So it's, 2019 is about $11,000 higher than 2018. So there has been concern that we were just, you know, spending was just going up and up, but it's really not. It's just that the department was underfunded for a long time, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
And I'll make a comment that this is the first time we've had a good reconciling of, I feel, our financials in the fire department, and you should be commended, Chief. And thank you very much.
Well, I think it was the internal audit and the ability to do the audit to point, you know, because you know how you know it's not quite right, but you need the audit to show that it's not quite right. So, yeah, so the audit is going to be in front of the assembly on January 14th on consent agenda. So that'll be there on consent agenda for that. So part of what was, I should tell our assembly member who's here, part of what was discussed was we set different goals for ourselves, 30 and 60 days, which is included in the packet, and we met most of those. And our CPA, which we hired, went back and reconciled all the books from the last three years to bring them up to date to now. So one of the things that we were able to show, which is included in the packet, is that too, that as we thought, we all thought, we're underfunded by EMS, you know, a number around 200-ish per year, $200,000-ish per year from area-wide EMS. So the fire budget's been taking up the slack on all that. So we actually have numbers now that can prove it, which AFD's been providing, which should hopefully help us in the contract negotiations.
The other point I'd make is this isn't actually an increase in the budget, it's a reallocation of where money was going. So there was certain money going to AFD, which now goes directly to Gerdwood Fire and Rescue. And the other $36,000 or $38,000, and it was slightly below, $36 of it is really a bridging process because we have the income from the revenue. a bridging process because we have the income from the revenue that should have come in this year, it's been delayed to next year. So it's really just solving a cash flow problem in the easiest way.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to move $25,000 from unused 2019 GBSA GVR account, 511380, repair and maintenance supplies, and to provide a bridging loan of $36,000 from the GBOSGFR account, 580380, capital account, understanding that the bridging loan will be reimbursed in full by GFR in 2020 with 2019 revenues.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none or those in favor?
And again, I'll say, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of work, I think.
A lot of work.
Hopefully, this is going to set us up well for next year, right? So, and also for the contract negotiations.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Galloping towards the end. First presentation, discuss RFP for the Girdwood Trails Plan. Group requested GBOS resolutions support at the next meeting. Christina, this is a slight change from my understanding of where we were on this. Do you want to expand the context?
Sure.
There we go.
Yeah, go ahead. It's been a long 10 days.
Okay. So last, we spoke with you about this, and thank you, we received your approval for going for a sole source to do the Girdwood Trails Plan with eight Alaska Huddle AK. We submitted all that to Purchasing, and all of a sudden Purchasing had a change of mind and said that they will not support a sole source, mostly because they'd been questioned very hard by Assembly about it, and that Assembly's not supportive of sole sources as they were in the past. And so with that, I said, I expressed my frustration, as I've spent probably over 100 hours just trying to go through the different things. We originally, our original plan was to work with Huddle AK through a term contractor, Bute Company, which we've worked with a lot. Bute would hire Huddle AK to come in and basically...
You're going to stop a second. John, Michelle?
Start conversations in the floor.
Thank you.
And so Huddle AK would have been, originally be hired by Bute Company. Purchasing was not supportive of it, they saw it as a pass-through, and that's when they said, if you want to move forward to this without going through a competitive process, which would be a request proposal process, then you would need to write a sole source memo and submit that. So we did that, we wrote a sole source memo, Christina and I worked together on that, we submitted it, Ron accepted it, he said that once you get approval from GBOS about the sole source, then we will move it forward to Assembly for review and vote for approval. We went through the process here with GBOS, GBOS wrote the resolution of support for that sole source, we submitted the whole package to Purchasing, and then Ron said that at the purchasing and municipal manager level, that the sole source was not an option anymore, and if we want to move forward, we needed to go to a competitive process through a request for proposal. I returned that news back to Christina, and Christina started her conversations with both John and Purchasing, and through that process, Purchasing had a change of mind again, and they today at about 4 o'clock or 3 o'clock said that we could work with the term contractor, Bute Company, and then we could hire Huddle AK through the term contractor. So we've kind of gone full circle, right back to where we are. I haven't had a chance to talk with Bute. It's understandable that Bute would probably have some finance, you know, they would have a cost to administrating this, because we are using their term contract to hire a sub through it. Jock said that he would keep it as low as he could, but he still has to be realistic to the fact that he is going to put some time and energy into this, and that he would be listed. The caveat with Purchasing is that they would be listed as a partner on this project, just not a pass-through going through. So my work is now to get the full proposal, which includes what Bute's costs is, we know what Huddle's costs is, and we can go that route, but at the same time, I think for the board is to consider, do you want to go through working with the term contractor, knowing that you are going to get Holly and Huddle AK, and you can move the project forward? Or do you want to go through a competitive process just to make sure that you're getting the best price you can for this contract? Keeping in mind that we have heard strongly from the community that they really want to work with Huddle AK, and we would hope that through the competitive process, that Huddle AK would still be motivated to then submit a proposal that would go through a review committee, and that the review committee, it'd be ultimately in their hands as to who they choose to select for the project.
How long will the RFP process take?
Yeah, so that's two things I have to add to it, is that when we began down this road with the understanding that we could potentially be using Bute Company, we already have a cost estimate from Holly, including Bute's at that time proposed overhead cost to manage the contract. And so we do have a cost estimate, six months old, probably just going to shake the dust off of it, so we do have that available to us. But it is the length of time to, it's Christmas, put something out on the street in January, have replies back in February, it goes before us in a decision at the earliest, our February meeting, but probably not, it'll probably get bumped to March, which means it won't go to the Assembly until April, which means we won't be having a kickoff until May. We already know that most of the community members that would be involved in a trails or recreation-related subcommittee are absent from our community or otherwise engaged. Even our trails committee has work sessions in the June and July meetings, and so we wouldn't look to have probably a proper kickoff and actual work done until the fall, which puts us a full 10 months behind schedule. In talking with drivers for this within the community over the weekend, whether a beverage in hand or not, all of them expressed extreme disappointment that we would have a delay in the kickoff, because that delays them a year of fundraising, a year of permitting, a year of trying to figure out where they could allocate particular initiatives, whether it be an actual trail or wild spaces or whatever. So I see this as a significant delay, and you should have seen me Friday afternoon, wasn't happy.
I appreciate it.
So I have a question. So you said there already, we already have an estimate from Bute? I mean, I have a real issue with paying somebody essentially for not using the contract, just for being the term contractor. I have a real issue with that. So do we have a number?
Yeah, so their number would be at 10%. So when I put together everything with Holly, we did, Holly would be four something, and then add the 10%, we would still be underneath 50,000, which was the red face number that all contracts in Girdwood kind of go through, is needs to be less than 50,000.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't got anything on official letterhead from Bute, but we would definitely, I mean, I would work out to get the best price we could.
So we would all come back to us before you did that.
Correct.
We were, tonight we're not voting to approve, anything, we don't know a number.
No, we would definitely have a full proposal for you at the next meeting.
The full, the resolution that we passed last month was so narrow, it's moot at this point, we specifically say sole source 485 to Huddle AK. And if that's no longer an option for us, which I am very disappointed it is not, because there are other aspects of municipal professional services that are being sole sourced, there's four mentions of one on the agenda for tomorrow night. And yet, we were told by Purchasing to walk this path, we started that in October in order to get the local community support of GTC and GBOSS in October, November, and now in December, and we're not able to allocate our own money for our own projects that our own community has asked us for. That's incredibly disappointing.
I agree, this process is clearly broken. Have you got any comments, John, about why, any thoughts from, because it seems like the problem is caused by the Assembly, we're hearing, the Assembly being unhappy with sole source contracts. Now, no, you speak for the Assembly for every man.
Well, you know, it looks like a problem, you think we'll do it, it's not, you're better. You know, I worry for years, I see sole source contracts, I sound the same person, because we've done it for 10 years, and it doesn't, it's a valid point. On the other hand, we've done that many years, a lot of times it's going to be an IT thing or something, a lot of money. We say, let's put out the bidding and check, you know, is this really still the best person? So we've been challenging more of the sole source contracts over the last couple of months, and not with any great policy changes proposed or anything, which is asking questions. And it's clearly on some notice, so they're getting a little tighter on what they offer as a sole source. And there are some cases, a lot of times with equipment, vehicles, they'll do a sole source, but it's actually through, kind of the United Party Organization, Nation Law, things like that, so it's sort of sole source, but it's got to be competitive, it's been a, we have a organization. But I think they are getting more careful of sole source. So it did come to us, and I didn't expect it.
Well, the requirement came from the Muni. The requirement to do the trails plan has come from the municipality. So we walked through the process that the municipality has told us to follow, and now we're being told, oh, that wasn't the process. Like Kyle said, we've come full circle. Why don't we have the Assembly's support in going forward? You have...
We tried, maybe we would, but...
I did try, that's why I was been on the phone with you all week.
Yeah. It will be challenged, it doesn't mean to acquire into the sole source, and we've been challenging a lot of them for those reasons, we want these things to go to bid, and so that year's falls out, it's a clever plan, it was there.
I'll make a comment. You know, when it was first proposed by Christina, I said, why don't we put it out for bid? I don't understand why we're not putting this out to bid. And everybody came back to me and said, these people are the people that need to do that, they're the best people to do it, they know our system, and everybody challenged me in that and said I was wrong. So I agreed with them, and I realized that this...
No, I'm glad the videotape is on. I was wrong, and I agree with them. Jerry Fox, 16th of December.
So, you know, we do have a reason behind this. It's not like this is somebody that was a friend of a friend that works in the, you know, lives here or something. But anyways, it is what it is, we have to go forward with what...
I was going to say, to put some color onto that, one of the complexities here is we're doing a comprehensive plan at the same time as we're doing, you know, subsidiary plans, and having the same person working on both is massively reduces the risk and pretty much puts us in a place of success. Anybody else doing it pretty much puts us in a place of failure. So it's pretty much critical that we have commonality because they've shown an ability to do this well. So going through an RFP process, it's just going, we'll almost certainly end up with the same contractor if they choose to do it, but we'll spend six months doing it and money and time.
Well, it will be six months, though. I mean, it's, you know, it's...
It'll be three months practically.
Up to 30 days, I think, we've got so much red and ready to go. And he's focusing on it, so I think it'll be done by the end of January.
Okay.
You know, Kelly Dunn, it's RFP, it's not what's bid, so...
Yes, that's right, that's what...
It's the same person, it's a red...
Yes.
You hardly imagine someone else...
Yeah. It's a waste of time for anyone else who bids practically effectively, unless something comes in significantly better.
I disagree on two points. The criteria that we were given for other sole sources of similar professional services, we were able to uphold within our sole source justification, which Purchasing did accept 60 days ago. Our timing is directly correlated to what we've heard from our constituents during the public process in the past 120 days, and is upheld by directives from landowners and land managers in Girdwood. Further, I also disagree that this is just a 30-day delay. The procurement process takes time, the allocation of funds between our levels here, because now, the reason I put this on tonight as new business is so I could be old business in January after being, hopefully, old business at GTC, should GTC be kind enough to give us some sort of broader resolution of support, so that we could support this with a resolution in January, giving decision-makers that hold the purse string the opportunity to do something in February for it to be approved by March. Again, it's not a 30-day delay, it's 90 at the most, and it abuts the critical season by which we have people skiing, getting boats ready, getting gear ready for the summer season, and then launching into May, which we know is going to be as warm as it was this past spring. There's going to be a lot more outdoor recreation economy matriculating through here in the May season, and we're going to miss that opportunity to engage those stakeholders that have told us that they wanted this done.
I understand the concern 100%.
Thank you.
The Assembly have, we don't decide, and I don't decide, some could go sole source, or it's said to be not an Assembly thing. We get presented, it's an administration thing, we get presented, and we can approve it or not, generally, generally it's just information for us. These are the sole sources that we get, there's rules for it, and some may be borderline, maybe some shouldn't, but we've started to question, you're on that borderline, we want you to go to bid. So, but you know, I have no control, I can't tell one half, if it falls in big decimal source, it's said to be not, I don't want that, I think it's very dangerous.
I want you to be an advocate for us. I would like you to be an advocate.
So let's figure out how we're going to go forward, let's kind of talk slowly.
I think we've, yeah, I think we have covered what's led up to this point, so it looks like we have three options. We either continue to fight the sole source fight, we accept the contract process and the financial, small financial penalty that will come along with it, or we go into full RFP. So I think it's probably going to be very hard to go down the sole source path again, it'll take time. So given the other two options, what are your thoughts?
I mean, if we could go down an RFP and get it done in a timely fashion, and we believe we're going to get the same people, why wouldn't we do that?
I think, I kind of half agree, it could take up to three months, I don't think it's going to take much longer than that. That's still a lot of time.
I mean, at this point, I don't have a proposal from you for the Bute term contract, so I won't be able to present anything to you till January, unless we do a special meeting some point early January to dust it. And so that, already you have a 30-day lag, and so if they get to that point and say, no, we don't want to do the term contract, we want to go to bid, then I could have everything ready, the next day, put on the street, and then it goes out to bid, and usually there's a window opening of 30 days or so many days, so that contractors can get their package together, put together, the submittals come in, then we convene the selection committee, and the selection committee does its work, and then we present that to Purchasing...
I told you.
And then Purchasing opens it and says, okay, you've selected them, now begin negotiations with the select, with the term, with the contract you selected. And then we negotiate out, and then we go back, we write a contract, the contract gets approved. I think, and I think if it's under a certain amount, it doesn't need to go to Assembly, it just depends on what happens, if it's over a certain amount, it has to go to Assembly, so that's one meeting. So it will take, it will be March at the earliest that we probably most likely will be starting.
Versus if we say we just could use our term contractor?
We can probably get to work by the end of January.
Why is this new business? I mean, I think I understand why it's new business, but I think it's a close call.
Because everybody got on to me about having a sole source under new, under old business a lot of times. So I'm being, so I'm being really clear that we had a very narrow resolution, and so...
I think the first time that made sense, this time we've already discussed this, and this is kind of, this is kind of a hiccup in the process.
But we didn't have, we didn't have the full information to present to you tonight, and you could have made a decision in old business.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's an argument it could be...
I didn't know if I was going to win that argument. I've been losing arguments this week, it's not made me happy.
In this case, you probably would have done.
John, that's a comment.
I think one, so, and I think the delay, Purchasing said they deal with it for 30 days, but your process, maybe...
Yeah, we're out of it.
But, you know, an advantage of doing it through competitive bid, is then you can get a man with sole contract and so on. You know, but if you just do it through Bute, you would say you'd get watched on it.
Well, we...
You can invest freely.
We can get a change order. So you mean amendment, like they had to do extra work, we had to pay extra, we could do probably a change order through the term contract. We work that now through, because we'll hire Bute to do design work on the street, and then they'll get into it, like, oh, we found this problem, we need $2,500 more to hire this surveyor, and we'll do a change order that way. So I still think that, we do have a limit that we do bump up with on a term contractor, but if we go forward with any other work, for example, with CRW, we hired them as a term contractor to do the feasibility study on the cemetery, and then we wanted to bring them back to do the schematic design, because they had so much knowledge on the cemetery. And at that point, Purchasing rejected us using them as a term contractor, they said, no, it's starting to look like you're using one contractor, you need to go out to bid. So we put it out, and in the end, we selected CRW to come back, but that put an extra 45 days of going through that process to get that going again.
So Jared, in answering your question, even if it were 10%... So Jerry, to answer your question, even if it were 10%, which would be the typical average for TBC, should that be their price for the potential to pass through? I think of a $50,000 scope of work, $5,000 worth of 100 hours that the, our municipal staff has in on supporting this project to date, and saves us 90 to 120 days on behalf of the applicants that have spoken so loudly and been engaged at the Girdwood Trails Committee meetings recently. I think it's worth the five grand, and I've got a couple of graders too.
I would tend to agree, just knowing what it takes to bring an engineering contractor up to speed on something, like, I mean, you just lose so much.
And it's not necessarily engineering contractor, it's a stakeholder, it's the stakeholder engagement, somebody knowing, we all know the value. I'm not going to get there, but--
So what I got to vote on this tonight?
Well, I want to ask a question about that, actually. So I had a thought about, I said, I don't think this necessary falls under new business, although it's being listed here. I know I wasn't, I wasn't consulted as one of the co-chairs about where it would go. I would actually, if I were in a position to propose something, I would actually propose a motion that we go forward and push this as an RFP, make that decision now. And that way we sort of honor the municipal process, but if we start it now, we won't be too far down, you know, we're saving at least a month in the process by making that decision now, unless you disagree.
I, no, I, I think it could go on old business. I don't see any reason why it couldn't. We've discussed it--
It's the same topic.
It's the same topic, and I thought you were going to suggest something different than that. I was going to disagree too. I would disagree if we were to say we're going to put it to the term contract, we don't know the price. So we can't do that, but we could definitely, I would enter, I mean, if you want me to enter a motion, I'll enter a motion to make the Girdwood Trails Plan, make it, to put out an RFP for the Girdwood Trails Plan.
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
That's basically what I was saying.
So they could start working it--
Do some work now.
In the meantime, we would get an estimate from Bute Company, and we would then, we could then decide--
That's another motion, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Okay.
So let's do both in parallel. If that's something the municipal staff thinks is reasonable and have the time to do.
Well, I was already starting to write the RFP when I got the phone calls afternoon.
So it's already started?
It's already started, but it's very basic at this point.
Some costs are--
And I would amend the motion that I just said to include that we're moving this to old business, because multiple reasons is better.
Does the RFP, who selects the company?
I would have to create a selection committee, which would probably be about three people, depending on the size here.
Is it based on content, or is it not, it's not what it says has to go?
We don't, they don't give us any numbers at first. Trying to remember, actually, it could be basic, but most of it's actually based on content and what their experience is, and what the judge, the selection committee thinks, and then we tally points and we come up with a final.
So I make a motion--
Let's start with, I said, I understand a motion, if we move this to, we reclassify this as old business.
I make a motion to reclassify this as old business because the Girdwood Trails Plan has been on the agenda multiple times in the past three months.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Move to vote, 4-0. Right, it's old business.
Make a motion to put the Girdwood Trails Plan out for RFP. Put the Girdwood Trails Plan out for RFP.
Hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I still think that it is advantageous, since we are operating without all the information from the Bute Company, to run traps concurrently. I think it's important for us to at least look at the cost benefit analysis of having the Bute Company provide us with an updated estimate beyond the one that we have in draft form from spring, summer 2019.
It sounds almost like you're offering an amendment to the second clause on Jerry's motion.
Almost.
Did she say, sorry, I was--
I said that I wanted to run the traps concurrently. I also, I mean, I'd love to run the third trap of still trying to get this in front of the assembly and getting the sole source taken care of, but--
Do you agree?
So I think all three options are still on the table, and I--
I would disagree with the third option.
I'm just, it's fine.
So I would tell him.
You're welcome to disagree.
Yep.
So I disagree with the RFP. I'd rather see the Bute thing and call the $5,000 and get this frickin' off my plate already, so. At this point, I'll host a bake sale at the, or grab a food truck and start running some extra business to the brewery and make up what we need to--
So I haven't heard, I haven't heard an amendment, so unless--
Well, you asked for discussion, so I'm discussing it. So if the time is ripe, I'd like to make an amendment to Jerry's motion to also include getting a formal cost proposal from the Bute Company to allow us to work with Huddle AK.
Okay. And then I think that decision would have to either be made at our next regular meeting or possibly at a special meeting, but probably the next regular meeting. Okay, amendment, does anyone want to second the amendment?
Second.
Okay. So discussion on the amendment?
Kyle, can we run these both at the same time? Does it make sense?
Yeah, we'll just prepare the RFP language and then wait for your direction as to what we do after we get an estimate proposal from Bute.
If this amendment passes and the motion passes, then what we're actually asking for is to prepare both, to have the start discussion for the term contract--
Yeah, we would try--
So we debate the decision, debate the decision next.
Yes, so on our side we'll work both and have both prepared.
Okay. Any other--
And then, so generally that goes, that has enough to go back before the assembly report is, if they do an RFP, the selection committee chooses the contractor, and isn't that not go--
I think, I got a, I don't have it written in front of me, but I believe under $50,000, I think, I think we would still have to present to the assembly as a consent agenda item to approve the final selection of the committee, or the contractor.
And that's why our sole source was in--
Where, whereas we use a term contract, if we use the RFP, we have to get it approved by the assembly, whereas use a term contractor, I don't believe we have to go to the assembly.
Exactly.
Those are all generous.
I don't think that's fair, I think that they're half million dollars, we just don't want to happen. So we get, like, the sole source, and we don't choose, we don't, we just accept it for it. So we accept, we'll get a report quarterly of competitive bids under $500,000, we just go, okay, we stop, and we get a report quarterly for sole source, okay.
Agenda item 9E3 tomorrow night is the sole source report for November 2019.
We don't, it's not like, we, if we say, I mean, our motion would be, we accept this report, it's a no, don't do these, that's a no, and that's the--
Well, at which opportunity do you get to say that you don't want to do these? Where have you become more scrupulous then?
Well, what we've done is we've questioned, and that seemed to have an impact.
You questioned the report?
Certain items in there, we say, why is this sole source not passing? And recommend, maybe we just, in some cases, we described, we were asking people, but it's not like we can say, no, don't do that. That's the administration which is acting. Now, I think having brought it up for discussion, we, there may be a thought, the administration will be made come out and say, let's change the rules. That's how we operate, it's not like we change orders, we change code in their processes. We don't, on these cases, sole source, we just accept the report, we don't say, no, that's not our-- They're not quite getting what I'm saying.
There are definitely items on the consent agenda for specific contracts below $500,000. They're often in the tens of thousands. I don't recall there's above or below 50, but there are--
If we're accepting money from different--
If the ground market--
Right. But if it's a contract--
They may--
You know, there's, there's change orders beyond their change order forward, you have to group that, there's things like that, there's little permutations, but if it's under $500,000 for sole source, under 50--
It sounds like it's unlikely we'll have to go through the assembly, whatever option we choose. So we have an amendment on the table to amend the motion, I think we've probably finished the discussion there. Let's vote on the amendment, call for the vote again.
I have one more question, sorry. I'm just curious about the timing. So will you actually send the RFP to purchasing, or you'll hold on to it until we find out?
I'll try to have everything prepared so that right when we get a vote from GBOS, which direction to go, we'll go.
And along with that, you'll verify whether it has to go through the assembly?
Yes.
And kind of will have a timeframe of what each would take.
And we could have a special meeting to--
Yeah.
----
Just give them the time of year, I don't know if that makes much of a practical difference. Okay, so amendment is, let's call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, 4-0. We have an amended resolution, or amended motion on the table, we're going to go forward with both the term contract, and get a quote on the term contract, and for the-- It's noisy in the audience. We'll just shout over-- So we have a, we have a motion on the table to go forward with both the, assuming the term contract and getting quotes, and also preparing an RFP. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, let's vote on it. Those in favor, 4-0. Right. Is that clear, where we're going with it?
Yes. Good. We start writing a RFP.
Excellent.
Getting from Bute to get us--
I think we've saved at least a month by letting this go. Last item is discuss MOA GBOS quarterly meeting agenda topics for January 27, 2019, 4:00 p.m. at Bridge City Hall. Well, apart from the sole source contract process, I think that's going on there, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Black, blue, touch paper, retire.
It's just new business, so if you have anything you can bring into the next meeting or between now and then--
I have one thing, and that is I will probably not be there.
I have four things. EMS, as always, always EMS. I'd like to talk about their level of engagement with the Historic Preservation Commission. We're going through and having things at our bazaars and PTAs, I just want to know what else they're doing in any of their projects to do any preservation, if there's any exchange of ideas, lessons to learn from any other municipal actions, that'd be good to know. I'd also like to, and this is something for Robin, the tow yard, I'd like to figure out where we're putting a tow yard for Slush Cup and for Forest Fair, and I'd like that discussion to really start in January, so we have the 90 days to figure it out in advance. And then is there anything on the bond, based on the language, that we'd like to see changed?
I think by then it's too late.
On, in January?
By the January 22nd, 27th, the bond language is being decided.
Okay.
And the other thing is, search for the references, we'll have engagement, we'd like to discuss that.
Okay.
And then we'll come off. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Want to rest the cake? I'll take it home. Good cake.